My apologies for the delay this evening. We had a non-public meeting, just got a little tangled up. Welcome to the ever 20th special meeting of the Town Council. If you kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I just have a few, couple of scheduled announcements to make. Upcoming council meetings, there will be no meeting on the 22nd, which would be a normal time, that's been canceled. Thursday, March 14th and Thursday, March 28th, at both at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room are regular meetings. Two important dates to remember is Wednesday, March 13th at 7:00 PM in the All Purpose Room at the James Mastacola Upper Elementary School, located at 26 Babuuksek Lake Road is the deliberative session. And Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM is the annual meeting, Voting Day, at your designated polling places. And to find those, you can go to the town website. And it will link you to the Secretary State's office.
Correct.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a couple as well. 2024 dog licenses are now available at the Town Clerk's Office. Per New Hampshire state law, all owners of dogs four months or older are required to license their dogs by May 1st. Owners must present a valid rabies certificate and a neutering or spating certificate if applicable. If you no longer have your dog, please contact the Town Clerk's Office at 603-424-3651. And if they're not there, you can leave them a message so that we may update their records. Parks and Recreation Department invites you to join them this Saturday, February 24th, at Wasman Park for the 32nd Annual Winter Carnival. The event runs from 12 to 3:00 PM and features 30 businesses and community organizations who will be offering free games and activities. For more questions or more information, please contact Parks and Recreation at 603-882-1046. And I think this will be year number three or four in a row with no snow, so... I don't think so. If we did, it wasn't a lot. We might have got it that week, so... The filing period for town offices are, will begin tomorrow, Wednesday, February 21st, and run through Friday, March 24th, March 1st, 2024. Let me repeat that one more time. The filing period for town offices will be, begin tomorrow, February 21st, Wednesday, and run through the following Friday, March 1st. To be elected, three counselors for a three-year term, one Ethics Committee member for a three-year term, two Library Trustees for a three-year term, one Trustee of Trust Funds for a three-year term, one Moderator for a two-year term, one Town Clerk Tax Collector for a three-year term, one Supervisor of the Checklist for a six-year term. Candidates must file with the Town Clerk to have their name placed on the ballot and must be a registered voter and domiciled in Merrimack per RSA 669,669,19. Candidates for Town Council also has to be domiciled in Merrimack for at least one year, per Town Charter Article 3-4C. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, we have no comments from the press public. We do have that tonight. If you'd like to address the council, you could step to the mic or sit at the table. And see, we're no one approaching. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, and no appointments this evening. So first on the agenda would be a continuation of the public hearing from February 15th. And that is to do, we're having a public hearing to discuss its proposed issuance of debt and the purchase of land if applicable, which it's not.
Nope. As of 7:00 this evening, let's just, let me check my email. I don't have a voicemail, and I do not have an email. So as of 7:00 this evening, we do not have any purchase of land or issuance of debt other than the SRF grant. The SRF from last week.
Yes.
So...
Okay.
We're good?
So, so, and we'll move on to the...
You just want to open it and close it real quick, family, please.
Okay, I've opened the public hearing at 7:13. If you would like to address the council, you can step to the mic over here. And see, no one, I will close the public hearing at 7:14.
No action needed.
All right, thank you, Paul. Legislative updates. Nancy, do you have anything? I don't see anybody.
None.
None, nobody in the audience from...
Things will change.
Yes, it will. All right. Town Manager's Report.
None.
Thank you, Paul. No consent agenda, no whole business.
That's what we're like to hear.
I think I'm liking this meeting already, so... No old business under new business. There's a petition warrant article. The council considered moving the following filed petition warrant article to the 2024 Town Warrant to be considered and voted on by the Town of Merrimack residents pursuant to Article 10, Citizens Initiatives of the Town of Merrimack Town Charter. Is Max, I don't know Max's last name.
Aberson.
Aberson, is Max here? He's apparently not here to present this. So...
Read out.
I did read, I will do that. Let me just hand out this. The petition warrant article read, "To see whether police officers shall be permitted to enforce federal immigration laws, comply with immigration detain requests, or contact federal immigration authorities to conduct a background investigation on anyone arrested on evidence of any other crime. No school district nor town official shall establish sanctuary cities policies that prevent immigration laws from being enforced by any police officer or federal immigration officer in the performance of their job. Four towns, Cheshire County and the City of Manchester, have enacted sanctuary city policies for illegal immigrants without notifying the general public beforehand. A yes vote is to stop our community from being turned into a sanctuary city." I don't know, with Mr. Aberson not here, I don't...
I don't know what the proper thing, protocol is, but however, if you'd let me, I just want to, I sent out a memo to the Town Council earlier today. Got this advice from our legal counsel. And there are two things that the council can do. First is, the council can decline to put this on the ballot because we are a budget charter town, meaning that our charter states that only monetary items should be voted on at town election. However, the council underneath charter, and this is for final adoption of budget, and 39-3 shall only be used for the purpose of petition warrant articles for appropriations. So the Town Council cannot move this forward to the voters. Or if the Town Council would like, because this was a group petition submitted, they can choose underneath Charter Article 10-4 of the submission of the proposed measure, the Town Council of its own motion may submit any measure for proposition for, or repeal, or amendment of a measure to the voters for regular or a special election. So underneath 10-4, the Town Council can move this forward to the warrant and have the voters vote on it as well. By doing it as 10-4, this does not alleviate for that 60-day ruling underneath 10-1, which is a group petition, that you still would need to hold a public hearing within 60 days of receipt of the petition. So we have two meetings scheduled in March that would fall underneath that 60-day rule that you can hear the petition. You'd still have to hear it even if you moved it to the warrant. If you don't move it to the warrant, we still need to do, because it was a group petition, you still need to move it forward. You still would have to have that public hearing in 60 days.
So either way.
Either way. The reason why this is a little choppy this year is because of timing. I could not get the seven clear days from the time that I received it, which was Friday, February 9th, seven clear days in the paper notice. So for me to get this in the notice, I would have had to put it in the paper by Monday, the 12th of February. Since I received it on a Friday afternoon, there was no, a Friday, yeah, Friday afternoon, there was no way I would be able to get it in the paper of general publication by Monday for people to see. So that is why, when I talked to legal counsel on this, what is the best way to do is, this is what they came up with. The council can either use 10-4 of the charter to move this forward to the warrant, or if it so chose, to decline to put it on the warrant based on 8-4, which is the final adoption of the town warrant. I know that's really confusing, and I'll try to answer any questions as best as possible.
Andy, so if we use 10-4 to move this forward, we would hold public hearings in March, in the two council meetings in March?
One of the two, yes.
Okay, one of the two, but we're, when we go to the town meeting, is this on, do we review this at the town meeting, or?
Yes, it would be put forward to deliberative session. Everything on the warrant is then talked about. Here comes the moderator, she can explain this more too. But everything on the warrant is talked about at deliberative session. So if you move this forward to the warrant, this would be talked at the deliberative session as well.
And then, is there any choices that can be made at the deliberative session?
Yes, there is, and I'll let the moderator explain those choices.
Perfect timing.
My apologies for my late entrance, but I just left the planning board meeting, which was coming at the same time. So I don't know what your discussion has been ahead, but go ahead and ask questions.
So I guess my question is, if we decided to use 10-4 of the Town Charter to move this forward,
The sanctuary city.
The sanctuary city warrant, what happens at the deliberative session? Are there any choices for the citizens? Can they make any changes?
You can make any changes that you can make to any other article that goes on the warrant. The warrant is established as a warning, which is where warrant comes from, is warning. These are the topics, I'm sorry, I'm out of breath. These are the topics that are going to be discussed. If you're interested in any of these topics, you should come to the meeting. So whatever's there, regardless of how it got onto the warrant has no bearing on what you can do. So you've got a number of things that you guys are putting on the warrant. They can be amended, they can be changed, just like a petitioned article can also be amended and changed. You can't change the subject matter. And if you look at how I have run meetings in the past, I don't read the article. I say, "We're going to discuss Article Number X regarding..." And in this case, you're talking about the petitioned article?
Yes.
So I would say, "We're going to discuss Article Number X regarding sanctuary cities." So as long as anything that happens is related to, excuse me, sanctuary cities, you're fine. I go back to my classic, "To raise and appropriate $25,000 to buy a police cruiser." So can you say, "I'm going to amend it to lease a police cruiser?" Sure, because police cruiser is the subject. Can you amend it to say, "Take $25,000," I'm sorry, Chief, "to buy a fire truck?" No, because police cruiser is the subject, fire truck is not. So that's, it's a subtle difference, but it's a difference. So anything can be done at the deliberative session.
Except the negotiated contracts and things like that.
Unless it is stipulated, negotiating contracts cannot be amended. And anything that is stipulated by RSA in that, if you're going to do, if you're going to go to SB 2, you're not going to go to SB 2, here's how you have to word it, that can't be amended. But everything else is...
And you can't amend the default budget.
No, you can't.
Okay.
Have at it.
Paul, oh Nancy, sorry about that.
Thank you, thank you, Lynn. Could you tell us, the other option is, what's it? Section 8-4, decline to put it on the ballot because the town is a budget charter town? What happens if that option was chosen?
I think you're asking for trouble. Legal or not legal, I think if you don't put it on the warrant, you're going to have a lot of people in town that are going to say, "You're being selective and you shouldn't do it." I think you should, my personal opinion is you should put it on the warrant and let the legislative body, the voters, decide what to do with it. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, and thank you for your opinion. But I just wondered if, if things that are on the warrant are supposed to be related to budget, and that warrant article is not related to budget, then is it appropriate to put it on? I mean, I understand, you know, people might, but it's, if it's not...
Well, you've got state law that says you can. And so you've got a little bit of wiggle room there in that, I don't know that there's...
See, it's the Town Charter that allows us to be a budgetary SB 2 election, which means only appropriations go on the ballot. However, in years past, this council has moved forward with non-budgetary items that were petitioned to be put on the ballot as well. Not this council, previous councils.
Right, but I always thought, exactly.
But the charter allows that too, to say that by group.
So it's almost documented exception.
Yes, it's an exception too.
Yes, because there's the multiple ways to get it. If we chose not to put it on the ballot, they could garner 500, I think it is, signatures to get it on the ballot.
100%, 500 signatures is automatic.
It's just as a short circuit.
Do you want to go there?
I wouldn't.
No, I, but I mean, I just, that's why I didn't, in this email that you had sent out, I didn't quite grasp the sense of that being budgetary items already.
I wanted to give you your options, like I normally do. And I did, like I said, I sent this out earlier, and I read what I sent out earlier to the Town Council for the record, so that people don't think that we're trying to circumvent the meeting. I read what I sent out. I just wanted you to have a heads up so that if you did have questions, you're not seeing this for the first time right at this second.
I don't believe it prevents you from putting other things on the warrant.
I agree. Yeah, yes, we'll do that. Thanks, Nancy. All right, does anybody have any further questions?
I'd like to understand a couple of things. One, the article would have to go and talk about sanctuary cities. This one is saying that a yes vote is to stop our community from being turned into a sanctuary city. Can that be turned into a no vote? Would stop our community? I mean, can it be?
If somebody wants to amend the article to say, or to add the word "not," I would not accept it. And I have done that before, because that confuses the voter. So if you come to the election and you got the ballot in front of you and you're looking at that and say, "Do I want to do this?" Yes, so I'm going to vote no. And do I not want this? I'm going to vote yes. Anytime you put a negative motion out there, you confuse the daylights out of the voters. So if somebody says, "I want to add the word 'not,'" I would not accept that. Figure out however, there's all kinds of other ways of doing it.
But my question is not whether it's not or whatever, but can they invert the flavor of the...
You can, you can change the intent of the article.
For example, a yes vote is to allow communities to be...
Be turned into a sanctuary city.
So it's not a yes or no, but it changes the intent.
You can change the intent.
As long as you don't change the purpose of the law.
Right.
Because you could say, a yes vote...
It's still talking about sanctuary cities, but it could say, "We want to be a sanctuary city" instead of, "We don't want to be a sanctuary."
So that could be done during the...
Well, you've got, you've got really two things involved here. You've got, one is the police powers that are in the first part of that petition article, as opposed to the second part, which is the sanctuary cities. And they're related, but you could change it to say, "Do we want to allow the Town Council to establish whether we're going to be a sanctuary city?" Sure, you could do that.
Okay, and so that concerns me. The other question is the extraverging here that talks about no school district or town officials shall establish sanctuary city policies that prevent so forth and so on. And then it starts talking about four towns plus Cheshire County and the City of Manchester have enacted sanctuary city policies for illegal immigrants without notifying the general public beforehand. Does all of that in there make this a...
Well, first of all, you got a problem with it. They're talking about, they mentioned both the Town Council and the School Board. I'm sorry, you guys have no control. The deliberative session has no control over what the School Board is going to do.
So this becomes just totally advisory, because it doesn't...
Yep, absolutely.
So this isn't even a hard and fast, it's just an advisory article? Nobody's...
And you take it upon yourselves at the next election as to whether you acknowledge what the voters want or not want, which is difficult for a lot of the things that we do.
And if the Town Council did choose to this, you would have to do an ordinance, which you would have to follow the ordinance procedures of the Town of Merrimack if you wanted to be a sanctuary city or you didn't want to be a sanctuary city.
It's not something we could just do on our own.
You would have to have the three meetings, you'd have to have the first reading, you would have to have the public hearing, and then you would have to have the final vote.
So there's exams, you know.
Right, and this is advisory in nature. And the vote would be advisory as well to the Town Council.
So I understand all of that, and I appreciate it. And I have no desire to even think about becoming a sanctuary city or doing anything of that flavor.
Even if you could.
Even if I could. But at the same time, I'm uncomfortable with putting this on the ballot personally. I think it's going to be confusing. I think it's going to distract from the town meeting, the town...
As it is worded now, I agree with you.
It's confusing, and...
That doesn't mean it has to say that way.
I think too, well, that's true.
But we're not going to change that here tonight. That would be changed at the town meeting.
It goes on. It either goes on or it doesn't go on.
The way it is.
Petitioned.
Right.
The only thing we're allowed to do is change minor grammatical slash commas slash periods slash capitalizations.
Cities versus towns versus, yeah. But no, it goes on as petitioned, and then what happens at the deliberative session is... Whatever happens. And whether you guys do something or somebody in the audience, a registered voter, does something, we have no control over that, but that's possible.
Right. I mean, I agree with Tom in that this is messy and it could turn ugly at the deliberative session depending on, you know, proposed amendments. But at the same time, you know, we received a petition that had the valid signatures, and I don't know that I'm comfortable saying that it shouldn't go forward, right? That we should put this out in front of the public and let them vote as messy as it may be.
It doesn't necessarily have to be messy at the deliberative session. This town has, over the many, many years that I've been doing this, has been respectful, has been reasonable, and has done what needed to be done and clarified things. And when we have amendments, I'm very careful about explaining what the amendment will do and how you need to consider it. So there's a lot of respect in this town. We learned a long time ago that I expect people to be respectful of their fellow voters, their fellow residents, their friends, their neighbors, whether they agree or they don't agree. You're respectful, and I would not expect a messy situation.
I hope you're right, but at least my involvement, this is the first time I've seen national politics enter our deliberative session, and so that concerns me.
You haven't seen me run them, have you?
I wish you luck.
I mean, I think the reality is, all these things that this attempts to do are in place already. We're not a sanctuary community. I don't, as you would suggest, have ever imagined that happening in my lifetime anyhow. And so...
Our police force, you governs by the state RSAs and federal laws on how to patrol.
Ask us to hold and detain, that was what would happen, I'm confident. So, all right. Nancy, and Barbara, like Barbara first, I already, I just, sorry about that.
So, question for you. This, usually the warrant has to be in the form of a question, correct? Is this enough of a question to be able to move it without making it a question? Because we do have the power to make it a question.
You have the power to make it anything you want to make it as long as you keep the subject matter. And as I said, this is why I don't read the article, because the article is not a motion. The article is a warning of the subject matter that's going to be debated at the deliberative session so that when you get up in the morning and you say, "What do you mean? You voted $25,000 for a fire truck? I didn't know you were going to do that." That's the morning-after rule, which is unrelated to other things that might be morning-after, but... Quit laughing, Andy. But that's what it is. It's a warning of what we're going to talk about, and if you have an interest in the fire truck, then you better come. Otherwise, you don't do it.
I definitely think we need to move this to deliberative session.
It kind of is a, it is a question, the way they started it.
To see whether...
To see whether it's technically the question.
Is it enough of a question to...
It doesn't have to be.
Okay.
But it's, it depends on how the motion is actually made. And the motion is not necessarily what is printed in the warrant. So for instance, if you have in the warrant, I'll go back to my example. One of the warrant articles says "To raise and appropriate $25,000 for a police cruiser." And the first person to come up and make a motion, make a motion, says, "I move that we raise the appropriate $25,000 for a fire truck." That is a legal motion. It's not an amendment, it's a legal motion, and that's where it stands. It's a very subtle difference, but it's, it's a legal question. It's been proved in court.
So if the motion is made right out of the gate to make it a fire truck, that would be okay? But if it's made to amend it, it's not okay?
Well, no, it wouldn't be, because you changed. But if the initial motion was to...
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what I meant, actually.
Because it's a fire truck, no, subject matter. But if the initial motion was to...
Move that $25,000 for a fire truck would be okay.
We take $25,000, raise an appropriate $25,000 to lease a police cruiser. That's legitimate, because police cruiser is still the subject, even though it's changed the intent.
It's what we call the stay-at-home rule.
Yep, that was the morning-after rule.
Yeah, it's the stay-at-home rule. If you're reading what's there, like she's saying for a police cruiser, all right, I don't have to get out of my chair because it's going to be a police cruiser. If I knew you were going to change it to be on a fire truck, I might have came to the meeting.
That's right.
Right, right.
Instead, so that's...
So subject matter is key. Intent can be changed.
Nancy?
Thank you. I would have a hard time supporting, putting this warrant article... Oh, I thought it said Nancy.
The gentleman's here.
Okay, why Nancy, do her, and then?
The gentleman's here, the petition is here.
Mr. Abramson, did you want to ask your question before I had him come up?
No, I just had a jam mic.
You can feel free to step up to the table here or at the mic, Mr. Abramson, whichever you prefer. We've just been discussing the different paths we, this could, that this could take this evening. So I don't know if you'd like to speak to your petition warrant article?
Sure, so I'm actually, I'm Max Abramson. I want to apologize for being late. So I was in the legislature for three terms, and I also happened to be a candidate for Congress, so I was at a different event in Huxit. So I had, that kind of kept me. The, this issue, I didn't know about, the question of sanctuary cities when I was in the State House on municipal and county. And I honestly was unaware that this was an issue. Turned out that Manchester, and I believe four towns, and Coas County, and at least a half a dozen states, the state legislatures had voted for sanctuary cities policies. And I asked about that, and of course, the response that we got was mostly from police. And they said that the need for the bill was, in some of these areas, that they were being told that they weren't allowed to enforce immigration detainer requests. They were told, in some cases, it's a priority of how high a priority immigration enforcement is, or federal enforcement of federal laws is. That's also a legitimate question, I think, for the board. That's a legitimate question. However, the sanctuary cities policies in some states, like California, police weren't even allowed to contact Immigration and Customs Enforcement. In a few cases, police, and especially retired police, said that they saw new rules coming down where they weren't allowed, if they had someone in custody, they're arrested for burglary, or car theft, or assault, or some other crime, that they weren't even allowed, in a few cases, to check their criminal records if they had overseas outstanding arrest warrants in another country, or prior criminal convictions, or a long criminal history in another country. I was one of the few legislators up there last time talking about career criminals who go back and forth on the border with, you know, Canada. A lot of people don't realize this. My district was right on the border with Massachusetts, so of course, we have career criminals coming back and forth across that border. The news media very rarely pays much attention to career criminals in Canada. I think that they have stereotypes about Canadians. But I have, I've had a lot of Canadian friends over the years, and they say, yes, there is some crime up there, there are career criminals in every country. So I don't think that this is a, I've never thought of this as an issue of race or nationality. It's really about the idea that you have an officer who's doing their job, doing what we, the people, kind of expect them to do and pay them to do, which is to protect and serve. And in some instances, you've had city and town councils, and obviously, Manchester City Council went through turnover because of this issue. And the main thing was that police were telling us that they're now being told that they can't enforce federal laws, or they can't enforce, in some cases, state immigration laws, that they're not allowed to enforce immigration detainer requests, or interferes in what they're doing. So I come from the, you know, this is nonpartisan, I don't mean to try to bring partisanship into a town issue. Seabrook, where I come from, obviously, people insist on it being nonpartisan. But the legislative Republicans were 100% opposed to micromanagement of any kind, and especially emergency responders, that they're kind of Johnny-on-the-spot, that they're there when there's a crisis, when there's a fight. Literally, driving over here, as I was pulling into the parking lot, I heard there's an officer who has an AM talk radio show, and he's talking about today, in New York City, they had officers who were attacked by someone had an outstanding arrest warrant, and he's also here illegally at the same time. And so, literally, by coincidence, as I'm pulling into the parking lot to come here and talk to you folks about this, we're having, New York City, they're losing a lot of good officers because of micromanagement and having their hands tied. And I've always thought that that's the wrong way to go, whether it's, you know, emergency responders, firefighters, rescue workers, smokejumpers, you name it. When I was a merchant mariner, we had a lot of micromanagement going on, and that created serious, serious safety issues on merchant ships when we had top-down micromanagement. So, the measure is long. It, I, when I talked to some voters, they, about half the people who signed this, immediately, they saw this, they said, "Yes, I'm 100% on board, let me sign this." And the other half asked about it, and I kind of summarized it, giving the little bullet point. What we're trying to do is let the voters say, "We don't want the future town governments telling police how to do their job, or what they can and cannot do." Obviously, if there are constitutional issues, Bill of Rights issues, we don't want to be telling officers that they should violate anyone's constitutional rights. But at the same time, we also don't want future elected officials or town managers saying that you have to do your job this way or that way, or the question of priority enforcement is not brought up in the measure. I believe that that's a legitimate issue for this board going forward into the future. But I definitely don't believe that we should tell officers or anyone else that they are not allowed to do their job. And one of the concerns, I think that it was a Massachusetts sheriff, elected Massachusetts sheriff, who was talking about this on behalf of, not only himself and his life experience, but also hearing from other deputies, that they were very much opposed to this as individuals, that they were very much opposed to sanctuary cities policies, that they saw this as something that was endangering officers, and it was a rare case where union officials were completely breaking ranks, and coming in and saying, you know, just for officer safety alone, police need to be able to investigate who they have in custody, or if they're showing up for a call. They have a very limited amount of time to punch information onto their laptops. And any micromanagement of any kind, I think, is potentially dangerous. So, it is an advisory petition. If the voters can vote it up or down, it's sort of a matter of opinion. I think one lawyer called citizens petitions, if it's something that's not either backed up by law, or this doesn't have the, what was it, hundreds of signatures? Because there wasn't enough time to get that many, so it wouldn't be legally binding. It's not something where someone, if this passes, it's not something where someone can take this to court and take the town to court. But it does allow the voters to step in and say, "We don't want our town government interfering in the work that officers do."
Thank you, Mrs. Does anybody have any questions? Nancy, did you want to?
I do have a question. Thank you for taking my question. I'm just wondering, did you talk to the Merrimack Police Department at all about this, and get their perspective?
So I've obviously spoken to some Merrimack officers and their family members, and they, you know, they have their own personal opinions. But when something's a town warrant, I think that they, historically, in other towns, they've kind of had to defer to their police union to have them be kind of a spokesman on an issue. I don't know if they've taken a position, I would doubt that they would take a position on just a citizen's petition like this.
I just wondered, did you talk to the police chief, and what his input was?
So I didn't talk to the police chief, I just spoke with a number of officers over the course of this, some at the school during voting, and then some while gathering signatures, and some while just talking to officers in general.
And, thank you. And I, in your conversation, what you suggested, a lot of the issues around these immigration problems in other states. Do you have concerns particularly about that situation in Merrimack?
So I want to be absolutely clear. If you've seen me covered in the news ever as a legislator, I'm 100% pro-immigration. I don't have any problem with immigration at all. In fact, I mean, this is just my own personal opinion, not getting off the topic. The citizen's petition only deals with illegal immigration and immigration detainer requests and matters of law. I'm, I've been an open advocate of immigration for economic reasons, for cultural reasons, for, you know, the benefit of students and even lower-income folks being able to go to Turkish coffee shop, or Thai food restaurant, or something like that, hotel, Indian restaurant, and be able to soak in some of the culture. I have heard some of the rhetoric that's come out over the years, where people actually want to just zero out immigration entirely. I strongly disagree with that. They certainly have the right to voice their opinion. But, the case that I made was a unique one when I was in the House. I said, you know, immigration is so important for our economy, for our social and cultural development. And as I've traveled around the world as a merchant mariner, as a private citizen, just doing research on traffic safety and whatnot, one of the most important issues about a nation's ability to attract highly skilled immigrants, half of our doctors and specialists and PhD electrical engineers are foreign-born. A big part of that is protecting their safety. So if we want to attract quality immigrants to our country, a big part of that is keeping the crime down. Some of the people who've come here have said that they're coming here to escape the crime, dangerous conditions that exist in some of their cities. So if we want to continue to attract quality over quantity, if we want to continue to attract immigrants to our country, almost half of our businesses are first and second-generation immigrants. So a big part of our economic growth is from immigrants. But at the same time, we have to stop, we have to require that people come here legally, the right way through the front door. And my sense has been that sanctuary cities have kind of bypassed that they've kind of allowed, you know, mass migration illegally. I haven't seen, I don't look for it, you know, just going out and about. But my concern is just, if an officer stops someone, if they're responding to an arrest, if they're responding to a fight, if they're responding to drunk driving, or an accident, or some other situation, I don't want to tie their hands. And I really wanted to, the reason I spent a lot of time on the wording on this is just to really narrow it down to just illegal immigration, and just making sure that officers are not restricted or restrained in some way.
Nancy.
Yeah, thank you. I do, actually, I served with you in 2018 to 2020. I'm sure then you're aware that Senate Bill 132 was filed by, it was a partisan bill. One of our representatives from Merrimack was a co-sponsor of that bill. And that was an act prohibiting cities and towns from adopting sanctuary policies. And that did pass the Senate on a partisan, along party lines, but did not pass the House, and was laid on the table on a vote of 203 to 168. It later died on the table. So, my point is that this was heard, this, the focus of your warrant article was heard at the state level, and did not go forward after public hearings and such. So, I'm just wondering about the value of, does it make sense to do this town by town? I mean, if our general government isn't supportive of this, what is the, and in Merrimack, I don't, I'm not sure that this is a real problem here. I'm not saying that there aren't illegal immigrants anyplace, but it's certainly not an issue that's been front and center here. So I'm just wondering what the motivation at this time for this town was for the warrant article.
So I had to say this last term when I was on Commerce, there was a certain Republican, and you probably know whom I'm talking about. I must have said this at least 20 times. Whether something has happened, a bad, terrible thing, whether it's happened one time, or 20 times, or 20,000 times, or if it's never happened, if something shouldn't happen, that we should take some action to try to prevent it from happening in the future. I was not able to reach that individual. One of the benefits of the State House is that there's a much greater degree of independence. So I did vote with you a couple of times, full disclosure. But you're, as a state representative, you have a lot more flexibility, and so we had, you know, House Bill 262 was the one that I led the floor debate on. And we had a few Democrats cross over and vote with us, and go against, you know, party leadership. And we had a few Republicans cross over and vote against the bill. I personally thought that House Bill 262 was a better bill, because I was the one on municipal and county who amended the bill and took out the provisions that I didn't agree with. And I think that this year's bill was a reintroduction of the earlier bill that I thought was... I don't want to insult one of the cosponsors, but I, it had provisions in it that I disagreed with. I, my preference is just to say, let police do their jobs. So like my Civil Rights Act of 2019, we have cops come up, and they testify, and they say that they're told in some towns to target blacks and Latinos. They're told that, and we were hearing that, not every week, but we were hearing that frequently in the House. So I drafted legislation to try to say, you know, if a cop is told by some politician, you know, in a meeting, or behind closed doors, or by a police chief or something, to target people of color, or anyone based on race, there's actually an issue of Irish Catholic versus Irish Protestant, believe it or not, it still goes on, or religion, or some other issue. If the cop says, "No, that's unconstitutional, that goes against my conscience", that that law was to try to protect the officer from being micromanaged, and being told to do something that he wouldn't. And Bloomberg, who was a Republican, ran as a Republican mayor, and then ran as Democrat president, I think that he lost the Democrat side, so there was a response from the voters, because he was caught telling officers to target, with these gun control laws, to target blacks and Latinos. And so I think that that's kind of an indication from the voters, and that's what we're trying to get from this, is an indication from the voters to say, "We don't want politicians interfering."
The crime component would already happen in town, I know that. If there's somebody here, whether they belong here or not, legally or otherwise, if they're committing a crime, and somebody wanted them held back, a police department would do that, that's the way it works. But, did anybody have any more questions fall in on this issue right here?
My opinion is, I understand what you're saying, Nancy. I think you're feeling that since the state legislature has an opinion, it doesn't say to me that towns can be different. They can express a disagreement with what they voted on, unless you can't. So, in my opinion, I think the wording has to be maneuvered a bit. It's a wordy, school district, it shouldn't be in there, that kind of thing, and Lynn has already addressed being able to modify it. But I think I'm in favor of the, putting it before the voters. They can make the decision. And if they think they want to concur with a previous vote up in the state, Conker, and the Capitol, then that's fine. But my premise is it should be put before the voters, and they can make the decision. And again, it's advisory. So at that point, we either pick it up or don't, or leave as is.
Do you, would members want me to come back with the proposed, maybe shortening the language at the deliberative session?
I would recommend you find out about deliberative session, modifying it.
So, and while you weren't here, there were comments about the school being included, things of that nature. We don't dictate what the school can or can't do. So that, in your process of trying to clean it up for, to make that motion at town meeting, you might want to look into those items.
The petition, as it is presented tonight, either goes onto the ballot as is, or it doesn't go onto the ballot. There's no changes that you can make to this tonight.
No, exactly, but at town meeting, when he moves it, he would do that.
At town meeting, that's different, but it either goes onto the ballot as printed, or it doesn't go onto the ballot, per your choice.
Right, no, and my suggestion was just that...
Ballot, it's the warrant.
The warrant, yes.
I'm sorry, the warrant, yes.
And...
And what happens at deliberative session is...
But if Mr. Abramson moves it that evening, he, I'm just suggesting he has the cleaned-up version to take care of those problems.
That's correct, he can.
Andy, you had something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I don't know, this is third council meeting in a row. I think national politics have jumped into our council meeting, and I'm not quite sure how we got here. But if you take the subject matter out of this, right? You either, in my opinion, you either respect the process or you don't. And we've got a petition warrant article in front of us, whether you you agree with the subject, or you don't agree with the subject, that has the required number of signatures. In my opinion, you either, you're either going to support the process, or you're not gonna support the process. And the process says, "We should put this in front of the voters and let the voters decide." Take the subject matter out of it, right?
But I don't think it says that you have to do that, I mean, I have no problem with that, but...
You're right, we do have, you're absolutely right.
It does not have to go to the ballot, and you disenfranchise no one.
Yeah, but I think if we respect the voters enough, that we try to put the choice in their lap as much as we do, then, again, I think that's the right thing to do.
And that was my initial comments to you, that you've got this petition, you've got voters, your voters, who have said, "We want this on the warrant", and I think you respect those voters, and you put it on the warrant.
This is, is this...
You don't have to.
No, my point, what I'm ready to ask Paul, is this is not a public hearing, but I know there are people here.
This is just new business.
Right.
You can allow them to speak if you want, or they can hold their comments to the end of the night?
I'd probably like to have, unless somebody objects, I'd like to have that opportunity now, just to let people, if they want to say a few words, you know, they're able to.
As long as it's not a debate.
Right, yeah, no debate, no back and forth, and also, and yeah, and if you can keep it... Right, no, yeah, no debate, no back and forth. And also, and yeah, and if you can keep it sweet and concise, I'd appreciate it. Uh, but if anybody, um.
Thank you very much. Oh, I was just gonna ask if other members had, uh, questions about wording or something that they might, you know, wanted taken out for the deliberative session.
Um, actually, I think the school one was the one that was most glaring.
The school and the four towns is irrelevant.
Oh, the.
That whole section from no school to the city of Manchester enacting sanctuary city, you don't need that.
Well, I mean, the, the, I guess the point underneath it all, uh, was that these towns and cities did it without asking the voters. And I wanted, my whole personal point of this was just to ask the voters, get the, the voters' feedback and have an open discussion. And then have the voters be able to vote it up, the question up, up and down.
That's a discussion item at the meeting as opposed to having it in your petition.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Your choice.
I've done citizens petitions. Sometimes people want the notes in it and some peo- times people want it out. So maybe we'll just bring it up.
Whatever, yeah, whatever's best. All right, um, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Um, Lynn, if you're gonna be hanging for a few minutes.
No, I'm, I'm staying. I'm just gonna relinquish the podium.
Okay, yeah, if anybody would like to address the council on this petition warrant article, you could either step to the mic or have a seat at the table here.
Seeing them, apparently.
Yes, if you, either place at the mic, in the center aisle or at the table. If you could state your name and address, I'd appreciate that.
Don Chisholm, fifty-five Bates Road. I'm for the idea of the petition. Um, I am also pro-immigration, done right. And the question I have is when will you folks decide whether you will put it on? The, uh, the ballot for the deliberative session?
Momentarily.
Oh, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Uh, Paul?
There's nobody else?
Yeah, is there anybody further who would like to speak?
I received an email today. I'd like to read into the record.
Okay, hold on, I opened the public hearing.
There is no.
Oh, that's right.
It just feels like it.
I can feel like it.
Kathy Comer.
Thank God you're here. Oh, yes, thank you.
Forty-four Belmont Drive. Good morning, Mr. McCallion, Town Council members. This email is in reference to the item on the Town Council meeting agenda this evening. Please vote in favor of putting on the ballot the need to vote that we as a town do not become a sanctuary city. Merrimack should not become a sanctuary city and we should allow our police officers to do their jobs. And arrest, question, hold, detain and deport any and all illegal aliens. There is a process for immigration and that the law should be followed. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Kathy Comer.
Thank you. I did get that. I think we all got that. Yeah. All right, there's no further comments. We'll move on.
So you need a motion to? I'm sorry.
Finish your comment, your thoughts.
Sorry. Just before we take a vote. I, I just want to share that, that, oh, thank you. Um, I cannot support putting this warrant article on the ballot as I believe it's a solution in search of a problem. Um, we're all aware that immigration is an issue, but which is great discourse and differences of opinion nationally. There are national groups seeking to influence state policy and, um, that of municipalities. Um, this warrant article impacts our own police department, um, and it was not brought forward by nor recommended, uh, by our police department. Uh, police in New Hampshire towns are already comply with immigration, uh, detainees when appropriate. It really, in my, my thought, we don't currently, nor should we begin to run our police department by petition warrant article. Um, and if we're going to start requiring, uh, our police department to enforce federal laws. We need to also provide them the budget and staffing that they would need to do that. There's no funding to support this, this, this warrant article. So, um, I, I, um, I understand and I'm usually all for leaving things to the voters. Um, but in this situation, I, I also see this, um, potentially as a, um. The first of what potentially could be many, um, national issues being brought to us. Our job is to govern for our community, um, and to, um, make decisions about. Um, things that impact our community. And, um, I don't, I don't feel that, um, you know, that I personally can support this going forward.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there any further discussion of the council? Tom?
I, uh, I, I'm gonna agree with Nancy about eighty percent. I, I think this is a, a, a solution that, uh, is looking for a problem that doesn't exist. I don't think there's anyone, uh, on this council or in the town that's looking to, um, promote sanctuary cities. I don't think we have that problem currently. The town is following these rules and regulations that are promulgated here. I think this is an advisory thing only. It, it doesn't have any force of law. And it's just gonna compound and confuse the issues. And, um, while I appreciate that, that people have strong feelings on it, I don't think this is the method by which we ought to try and govern or, or rule the town. Uh, I would not in any way support sanctuary cities. I have no problem with immigration. Um, I certainly have no problem with, uh, enforcement of immigration rules and laws. Um, but I just don't think that this petition is actually going to accomplish anything except to confuse voters. Or cause a lot of dissension within the town, um, when it's not an issue in the town. Thank you.
I tend to agree with that, Tom. I, I do believe, uh, unless somebody tells me tonight that it's not true, Paul. Um, I do believe that if, uh, federal immigration enforcement asked for us to detain somebody who had violated our laws. And were stopped by our police department, that that would happen. I'm confident that would happen. And so, um. You know, I, I generally don't have a problem putting it forward, but I, I just, I don't want to use the phrase a third time. But it is a solution in looking for a problem, but.
I guess, although based on what you just said, that seemingly we don't have a problem. That if ICE should contact our police department and say, oh, please detain this person, we'll pick them up. I'm not so sure. It happens the other way around because that's the way ICE operates. So a lot of police forces do not notify ICE when in fact they have detained someone is who is, who is in the country illegally. Uh, again, it depends state to state, city to city. I know people in Massachusetts do a little differently. So I think this is more of a, an action that says. This is how we feel and this is what we want to see going on. Now, the fact of the matter is, is that it all depends who's sitting in the governor's seat in, at the time that, uh. Someone makes a decision that they want to make the state sanctuary or not. Because understand, if for some reason the governor and, in the House and the Senate pass and the governor signs a bill. This is, New Hampshire's now a sanctuary city. All bets are off the table because we are only a subdivision of the state. Which means that state overrules town. So I have no problem putting this forward only because, again, it's the process. We have citizens who have spoken. They would like to see this at least come under consideration. Does there ever mean that there will be action on it? No, probably not, but one never knows. And I can see why someone may think it's preventative in nature and necessary. But other, but really what it does is it allows our citizens and our residents to come out and say, this is how I feel about this topic. And obviously we have people here who feel about this topic and I don't want to shut them down. So I say we let it fly and let it go to the deliberative session and let them hash it out there.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I, I think we either be consistent and all non-budgetary things, we kill under section eight dash four. And never allow one to go forward, or we allow them to go forward under ten dash four. And we allow them all to go forward. But I think to pick and choose what petition warrant articles can go in front of the public. I, I, I don't think that's my role as a town council. So.
So I think everybody's had their opinion.
I think so.
What's the pleasure?
I passed out motion cheat sheet again tonight. If the council so chooses, please use the language that's in there if they so choose to move this forward.
So I'd like to make a motion to move the sanctuary city group petition to the town warrant pursuant to charter article section ten dash four.
Second.
Motion by Andy Hunter, second by Barbara. Any further discussion on your motion?
I, I think we've discussed it.
I think we have.
Yes.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, um, five two zero. All right.
So it will be on the, it'll be. It'll be moved to the deliberative session.
Next item on the agenda is review the two thousand twenty-four town warrant, which has been tabled from the February fifteenth meeting. Um, somebody could move to take it off the table? Motion by Barbara.
Second.
By, second by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of taking it off the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. All right.
I know this has changed from year to year. We'll have to decide how we're gonna do it this year. But I believe last year we didn't read the whole article. Is that correct?
No, we, um. Great, I gave mine away. Um, what we did last year was that, uh, we, we just said it would be in the record, the preamble. And Article One, meaning what positions were there, um, would be, be there. And then we just read the articles themselves and moved, um, moved to recommend and then moved to deliberative session.
But we didn't read the whole article?
No, no.
Right.
Um, which one?
All of them.
Well, actually I did and I was lectured for doing that, so.
But that's why, that's why I prefaced my comment was done at both ways.
Yeah.
So how did we, do you want?
It doesn't matter.
Do you want to read the whole thing?
Well, no, I won't do it a second time because I, I backed around the first time. But, uh, I always figure it's that way I know what's in there. But, so yeah, it's whatever the person make, moving the article. That's what they want to do. Right, I mean, is there?
I mean, I can see where, for example, Article Two has to do with adding a student representative to the town council. And the specifics are in detail is available, but do you want to read the whole thing?
Whomever's presenting that as a counselor can make that decision, I suppose. I don't know that, I don't think it's necessary, but.
So you're saying we're going to make a decision, which is a second step, because we have to decide who's gonna be presenting the article.
And that's when we talk about the deliberative session.
Right. Not now.
Not now. This, this.
Well, that's where you drive that.
Well, both.
Oh, okay, because reading into it, it's, I, it's not necessary. I think Lynn was the one who lectured me last time.
This is, this is to, to move.
Lynn doesn't lecture.
Move each article, right, and you put your recommend, we have to get your recommendations on it. And then move it to deliberative session. So it's a two-step process for each article.
And then in the deliberative session.
You meant tonight, you want us to read it tonight?
Yes.
Oh, my mind's already a deliberative session.
No.
You don't need to.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All right, for tonight.
Do, I, that's why I said, do you want to read this verbatim?
We will, we will, even though it's not being read verbatim, we will include it as it being read verbatim. Versus the warrant that was handed out this evening to the town council.
Correct.
And that's how the minutes will read.
And it's gonna be in that, uh, handout that we send to the voters.
Voters, and it'll be in the deliberative session handout as well. And it'll be on the town website once I can.
Multiple sites.
The recommendations in here.
Okay, now that I'm on the right page.
Are we ready, man?
I think we're ready. Okay. Article two. That's due with the student, so the charter amendment, we're not reading them is what we decided.
No, but if you can give the summary of what the article is.
This is, um, a charter amendment to appoint a student representative, this, uh, which the school board would choose. And they would serve for a one-year term as a non-voting member of the conservation commissioner.
Just for clarity, it's, the school board would, would recommend and the town council would.
Point, thank you, Tom.
As a non-voting member.
I would like to move to recommend Article Two Charter Amendment to the deliberative session.
No, no, recommend, I would like to recommend Article Two, the Charter Amendment.
That too.
That, you gotta do them in two separate motions.
That, oh, move to recommend Article Two Charter Amendment. We need to vote and then do another vote. Okay. So I'll do the first one. Move to recommend Article Two Charter Amendment.
I'll make a second.
By Nancy Harrington, second by McKenzie.
Yeah, confused to me. I am.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Seven zero zero.
And now I'd like to move Article Two to the deliberative session.
By Nancy Harrington, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Yeah, I don't know why he couldn't, but if that's what he'd like, that's, so.
Looking for a second?
No, Nancy Murphy has seconded it.
I thought we did it all at once, but go ahead.
Actually, it.
You could.
You could, but we, to keep it clean.
We're being cleaner this year.
Yes, okay.
Okay, if there's no discussion on this motion, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero. Okay, Article Three.
Budget.
No.
What's that?
Article Three is not the budget.
No, and that's what I was just reading. It, it's, uh, to raise and appropriate, um, two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars. For the purposes of developing final design plans for the stormwater and infrastructure project on, uh, at Pine Knoll Shores. Which is, uh, Babu's Lake, the development of Babu's Lake. Is that adequate?
Yes. This is the, uh.
The drainage, the design plants.
The design plant for drainage, but it's also a, um.
A bond.
A bonding article, correct.
It's a bonding article.
Yeah.
So it requires.
Yes.
Three fifths.
Move to recommend Article Three. Go ahead. What'd you say? Move to recommend Article Three. Motion by Andy Hunter.
I'll make second.
Seconded by McKenzie. Any further discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero.
Now.
Move to, move Article Three to the warrant. To the deliberative session, thank you.
Motion by Ants, Andy.
Second.
Seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Okay, the, this is the operating budget, um. Uh, to raise and appropriate, uh, an operating budget not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. Um, amounts of totaling thirty-nine million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. And the default budget is recognized as thirty-eight million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars. Which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law.
I'll move, I'll move to recommend Article Four, which is the operating budget.
Second by McKenzie, seconded by Nancy Harrington. Any discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero.
And to move Article Four to the deliberative session.
Second.
A motion by McKenzie and seconded by Nancy Harrington. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Article Five is a raise and appropriate to sum of two million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to be added to the capital reserve expendable trust funds. Bless you. Um, and the list is noted on, on that. Should I read through that note? No, okay. So it's understood, so, um.
Move to recommend Article Five, which is the general fund, C R F.
Second.
Capital Reserve Fund.
Motion by Barbara Hill, seconded by Nancy Murphy.
And move Article Six to.
Absolutely.
Why is the milfoil separated?
Milfoil separated because it's an expendable trust fund versus the other ones are capital reserve funds. So that's how D R A would like that. That's why.
Any, any discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
And move Article Six to the deliberative session. And I'll make a second? Five, sorry. Article Five to the...
Article Five, yep.
So the deliberative session, motion by Barbara. Did Mackenzie, did you make that statement?
Mackenzie seconded.
Seconded by Mackenzie.
You gotta make one.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying seven, zero, zero. Article Six is to raise and appropriate the sum of $550,000 to be added to the Sewer Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund. And that's it.
Come for sew, to come from sewer fees.
Yes.
It would, yes. Hi, Nancy?
Let's make a motion. Move to recommend Article Six Waste Water Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Murphy, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
And to move Article Six to the deliberative session.
Second.
By Nancy Murphy, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven, zero, zero. Article Seven, town to vote on, to vote to approve the cost items included in a collective bargaining agreement between the Merrimack Town Council and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local Twelve. Which...
I move to recommend Article Seven NEPBA twelve contract.
motion by Tom Kaneg.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy Murphy, and that raises an appropriate, it's a sum of $293,873 for the first year. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
I move Article Seven to the deliberative session.
And I'll make a second.
Tom Kaneg, motion by Tom Kaneg, seconded by Mackenzie. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying seven, zero, zero. Article Eight. So the town of Merrimack to vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement with the New England Police Benevolent Association Local One, One, Two, which calls for a first year appropriation of $59,943.
Move to recommend Article Eight NEPBA One Twelve Contract.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
Move Article Eight to deliberative session.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Mackenzie. No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven, zero, zero. Article Nine, show the town of Merrimack vote to approve the cost items included in a collective bargaining agreement between Merrimack Town Council and the Teamsters Local Six Thirty Three, which calls for a first year appropriation of $84,764.
Of which $44,000?
Oh, thank you. Of which $44,000 is coming from the wastewater enterprise fund. Motion or recommend Article Nine? This is by Andy Hunter.
Second.
Seconded by Tom Kaneg. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
Motion to move Article Nine to the deliberative session.
Motion by Andy Hunter, seconded by Tom Kaneg.
Bless you.
Bless you.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero. Okay. Article Ten is to see if the town will vote to adopt the Town of Merrimack Community Choice Aggregation Plan. Oh, gosh, you know, prepared by the Merrimack Electric Aggregation Committee slash Community Choice Aggregation Committee. I'm just seeing all this acronym going on, but to further, I have to raise the council to develop and implement Merrimack community power.
Move to recommend Article Ten, the Community Choice Aggregation.
Second.
Motion by Mackenzie, seconded by Tom Kaneg. A little faster, Barbara, you'd be all set. No further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven, zero, zero.
Move Article Ten to the deliberative session.
Second.
Thank you. Mackenzie, I was ready to move on without that, but motion by Mackenzie, seconded, no, I didn't want to, I was ready to, though, but... Seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven, zero, zero. Article Eleven, this is the, to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 million for the purpose of development of town-owned land on Pearson Road into multiple-use athletic fields for use of soccer and football program, but it could, it's gonna be a soccer field and a baseball field, I guess. A softball field.
And, and softball.
Now, this is...
I'd like to move to recommend Article Eleven Pearson Road Athletic Fields.
And I'll make a second.
It's a motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Mackenzie.
Is this one we need to put a recommendation on?
Yes, because it's a money article, so the town council would need to put their recommendation or not recommending by voting. No, you're really saying you're not recommending.
It'll go on, I got...
It's gonna go on whatever, whatever the vote is.
And this is the wording that was on their petition?
Uh, Pearson Road Athletic Field, yeah.
Okay, with a softball, et cetera, question mark?
Yes, that's, that's exactly taken from their document.
Here's the question, that's a question you wanted, Barbara. The question mark at the end, I gave you the question. Never mind. So...
Got the first and second, and first.
Yes.
Mackenzie was second.
Yes, I think I noted that. Thank you.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
That was what I was doing, sorry.
Did I cut you off?
No, no, I... That was, I was, that was your question.
Asking that question as part of the discussion, sorry.
Didn't mean to throw you off.
No.
I think we've talked about it, you know, and I, I think there are varying opinions and they're all correct. It's just a matter of judgment that the NYA would like the town to voice an opinion on. So, and they've, they've done a presentation, and now you know they're going to do a presentation at the deliberative session. So they're the ones who are going to have to sell it.
Right, and then, and I'm willing to support it, but this is the difficulty where I have to put my recommendation. I'd rather know what the town wants on this without tainting the water, if you will. And so, I would have, I would more have preferred to see, you know, us to take a little bit more of a lead on it, but we obviously, for very evident reasons, haven't been inclined to do so up to now, yeah.
Well, you actually have been.
It's steady.
You, you put, you started putting some money into the Capital Reserve this year.
Five thousand isn't gonna...
No, 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 but listen, you, they got mo, sorry, don't mean, sorry, don't mean to say that. But it's five...
I was raising my eyebrow.
Five thousand dollars is a start, next year, a little bit more, and you already have money in this Capital Reserve Fund. And in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you have it as a bond in the CIP of $850,000, plus the money that was set aside in the Capital Reserve totals the million dollars. So the council has taken this up. It's just, doesn't look like you're doing it all next year. It's over several years to get up to that million dollars.
So there's $850,000 in the...
Nope, there'll be a hundred, a hundred and fifty by twenty-six, twenty-seven, would be a hundred and fifty thousand, and then we'd bond the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the rest of it. There's pros and cons.
And that's, and that, that's what I've recommended to NYA, is they have to be able to deal with the pros and cons, and that's one of the cons.
Right, but just wanted to say, the council is looking at building an athletic field, it's just not next year, it was in a couple of years from now.
And if we follow the plan that we're, we're, we currently have laid out, we don't have the twenty cent spike in the tax rate.
Correct, for one year, that's right.
For one year.
And that's why there has to be clarity in terms of the voter guide, as well as the presentation by the NYA, acknowledging that. You're absolutely right.
And that can change at the deliberative session.
Correct.
See, because we did this more, what, two or three years ago? I can't remember for the drainage project that they wanted three million bucks for. And, um, and I, I was gonna let the taxpayer, you know, I wanted to have the voter have that opportunity, and I hated, you know, going against it, so anyhow.
It's typical. I mean, we can, I could do a whole presentation tonight, but I'm not gonna. Things have already been said, and it's their job to sell it.
Yeah, I mean, we debated this.
I know, I know, and, all right, I just, I enjoy watching Phillies hesitant to call the question. No, 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 is there any further discussion? Fair enough. Any further discussion? This question. Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Opposed? Two, five, zero.
Don't take it personal.
No, not at all. So it's a, voted is to not recommend.
Well, but it's gonna go on.
Literally be two, five, zero.
Yes. They have to, it's a petition warrant article.
Yeah, it's gonna go on regardless. And, and I'm going to move Article Eleven onto the deliberative session.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven, zero, zero. Article Twelve.
Petition we heard tonight.
Okay, yep.
We already, so we have to move it to the deliberative session, though, right?
Yeah, that's it.
So I'm gonna move Article Twelve to the deliberative session.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You said, yep. Opposed, staying seven, zero, zero.
If we could take a five-minute council recess?
A council five minutes? Sure. We'll do that.
Yes, we're good.
All right, we're gonna move on. The next item on the agenda is the 2024 deliberative session. We're going to discuss who's making the motions and...
Yep, and this, this is because we do not have another meeting before the deliberative session. So normally, we try to see which councillor is moving the item at deliberative session and who's gonna second it. And if the councillor needs information for talking about the motion, that's to come, and we'll get you all the information needed. So that's what we're really looking at, and we're, we're only moving items two through ten tonight. Those are the only ones the council will move. The petition warrant articles, we've moved by the petitioners.
Yep.
And, and you're not, yes. And usually, item number four, the operating budget, is by... And usually, item number four, the operating budget is by the.
Chair.
Finley, the chair and the vice chair.
Yep.
He just included you there, that's awesome.
And I'll be very behind you, same second.
So, all right, so who's, who's doing number two, we start with? I think, um.
McKenzie, McKenzie, McKenzie would like to do number two.
I don't know, is there a quorum at that meeting?
Second? Who's gonna second it, McKenzie?
I'll second it.
Was that Barb?
Yes.
McKenzie.
Article three. Pine Knoll Drainage? I'm taking control here, you guys are chatting.
Perfect, I know it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Please, we need, the chair needs to run the meeting, the way the chair needs to run the meeting, because can't have more than one person talk, because I gotta write this stuff down, so please.
Well, he's pushy tonight, isn't he?
Sorry, I am pushy, it's a long day, I'm tired.
All right, so. And, uh.
Article three.
Yeah, who, who would like to do Article three? Nancy said, oh, look at.
Tom can do it, I'll second.
Second.
All right.
Know who's moving Article?
Second.
Article four, I, I'll be moving it, Nancy's gonna be seconded.
I'm talking Article three, who's second again?
Oh, um.
Nancy.
Nancy. Okay. Finley?
And Article four, I'll be moving Article four.
Nancy.
And Nancy.
And Nancy, yes. H. Article five, the capital reserve funds.
I'd like to present that, if possible.
Should you gonna move it?
Move it. Andy said he'd second.
And then, after the motion's made, spoken to anybody, had speak to it, Andy, so. Yep. Just speak, but you can as well. On Articles, Article six, Andy Hunter would move Article six, add in the, who wants to second it?
And I'll make a second on that.
Who's that?
McKenzie's gonna second it.
Which one do you wanna do?
It'd be ready, we're moving to Article seven, so who wants to jump first, we'll go.
That side has to move.
Article seven is the, uh.
NE PBA.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Sardians and Detectives.
Second.
Yeah, who's gonna second it, Andy Hunter? Article eight is the dispatchers and office staff, Nancy Murphy, motion, who's gonna second it? You got Tom? Article nine is, um.
I'll move Article nine.
Supervisor and clerical staff of Public Works, McKenzie's gonna move it.
Second.
Yeah.
And Barbara's gonna second that.
Article ten, I would recommend Tom moving it and Andy seconding that, because they were on the committee.
What a good idea.
We can do that.
On what? Article nine?
Twist that, twist your arm, twist your.
He hasn't presented one yet.
So.
I did it. I didn't want him to get away with it.
Barbara?
Just a point of information, because I'm gonna forget this, that when we're all lined up on stage like that, those of us who are at the far end of where you are, we can never hear you.
So.
You can't hear me?
Yeah, just, it's the way the speakers, the speakers are set up in front of us, so what we hear is you talking, but as you move further down that line, we don't hear you so much.
Okay.
Just so you know, when we look at you like, huh? Because, yeah, we're always down there.
I've never heard anybody say they couldn't hear me.
Right next to her.
I know.
All right. So, right.
We good?
I think that's it.
Can I go home?
Do you know who?
Can I go home?
Yes.
Any other comments you would recommend to us relative to how we run the deliberative session?
It's gonna be run the same way we have run every deliberative session for the past thirty-plus years. The, the town voters, they, they all know how it runs, and like I said, Merrimack is very, very respectful of their friends and neighbors, we've never had a problem where we've had to remove anybody, although I would not have a problem removing somebody if it needed to be. We've come close a couple of times, but have not needed to be. Merrimack is, is good as far as the town meeting is concerned, they know what they need to do, they know why they're there, and they're respectful, and I appreciate the fact that they are, because that makes my job easy.
But just to have it be said that you are also a great part of that, because you do such a good job, it's true.
Well, we, we've established rules, and so everybody knows, and it's the same for the schools as well, and this goes way back to the time when Bill Klein was, was school and I was town, and we were both soccer officials, we knew how to have two sides playing fair and by the rules and good sportsmanship, and you know, it, it worked, and Brian has taken over the school now, and he's doing the same thing, so it works, and the town knows what to expect, and, and they, they step up to the plate. I would like to make a public service announcement. Tomorrow, Wednesday, the filing period for town offices as well as school district offices opens, and it will remain open until March first, when it closes. You can go on to my election Facebook page, you can, or you can go on to the, the appropriate town, town and school sites, see who's open, the, the school was modified because we had two people resign from the budget committee, and so that opened up two spots, so you need to make sure that you're looking at the latest one. Um, I think there's four three-year terms, there's two two-year terms and one one-year term. But they're all out there, have at it, folks, we need more people, not only signing up for the planning board and the zoning board, but we need you to file, step up, you know, this is your community. Rather than sitting back and whining and complaining, be part of it. It's not that hard. But be part of it, and, and have your voice heard.
Absolutely.
And then we'll see what happens on election day on April ninth.
For confirmation, they have to sign up at Town Hall at the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office.
For the town.
Are, for the town.
The office hours, they are, they will be opening up at eight-thirty tomorrow morning, um, for this, if, uh, it opens eight to four-thirty, eight-thirty to four-thirty is the hours at Town Clerk Tax Collector.
And the last day, they're open till five.
And the last day, they're open till five o'clock.
And school district, you're gonna go to the superintendent's office, similar hours to sign up there.
Yeah.
And please do it, folks.
Is that, uh, are they gonna be open at eight-thirty? Because they normally open at nine, that window, right?
The window's usually open at nine, however, for signing up.
Election week?
For election, for, for election, if you're there to sign up, all you have to do is just tap on the glass and just say, I'm here to sign up. Diane or Brenda will come around to give you the paperwork that you need to sign.
Okay.
Because I know some people wanna sign up first thing tomorrow, uh, before they go to work.
Take, take part of your community and contribute.
It's generally an enjoyable time.
Hey, this is my fun job, I've said that for years.
For the non-election position, just go to the town managers, you know, you, you mentioned the zoning board, the planning board, the non-elected positions.
Submit a letter of.
Submit a letter of interest to the town manager's office. And I, I mean, I will say, before I got involved in, in, you know, the, the town government, I often thought about volunteering for the planning board and zoning board, little intimidating, right, because it says, hey, you know, submit a letter of interest, we'll see if you're qualified, but in my opinion, the major qualifications are that you're willing to volunteer and you're willing to be present at the meetings. I think if you're, if you meet those qualifications, you're gonna find a very positive response, and so.
Planning board is two meetings a month.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Zoning board is even easier, it's one meeting a month, come on, you can do that.
That's what the committees are.
So, I, I would just say, for the folks out there that may be a little bit intimidated by the process, don't be, you'll, you'll find a lot of very pleasant folks to work with.
Right.
You know, and I will say, don't be intimidated if you don't know the topic that the committee is handling, that you're, you're showing or having interest in. Uh, I am on the planning board, and I know nothing about building codes or anything like that, and yet the staff is very good about giving you materials that you can use, uh, just to get familiar what the laws are and, and what's going on, so it's, if I can do it, anyone can do it.
You pick up the phone, you call community development, say, what do I need to be concerned about, and they'll walk you through it, they're great about doing that.
If it's on, you have to get a little, bring it a little closer.
Oh, Grace, give it up.
Well, she did say, that's the first time you never heard.
Yeah, Justin is actually back there.
Well, Grace is there, too.
No, Grace was right there.
Grace is there.
She's back there laughing now.
Oh, yeah, she's waving at you, back to your head.
So.
Okay, guys?
All right, thank you so much for being here.
End of my.
I know there was a little conflict going on, so we appreciate it. All right. Last on the agenda is February eighth minutes. Or did I skip something? Yes.
So, we have changed the way we do minutes, remember, any modifications? Or amendments?
We look to first.
We do first, and then we move it.
Yes. Yes.
I moved to table the minutes from February eighth.
It's not debatable, so.
I need a second, but.
Second?
Yeah.
Very good, all those in favor of the motion to table February eighth minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
Are we ready for an improvement?
Wait a minute, I'm just, no, I don't wanna go off. I've done this for a few years and I still have to look, so I had to get to the page.
Obviously, I'm ahead of schedule.
Comments from the press, seeing none, comments from the public, seeing none.
You still have to go through whatever.
Council. Seeing none. There we go.
May I move to adjourn, please?
Are you asking Paul's permission? Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara, all those in favor of the term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero, thank you, everybody.